So I will call the meeting to order. Pam, our chair is somewhere between hither and yon. She's on an Amtrak train somewhere between New Jersey and here. And she's like four hours behind schedule. So she may or may not be joining us tonight. So I, as vice chair, will be cheering at least till she gets here. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order and would accept a motion to adopt remote participation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a move by Alice, second by Jeff. All in favor, roll call votes. I think Erica, you're going to be first.
Okay, Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Oh, sorry, I forgot about Michael. Okay.
It's okay. Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes. Jeff? You're muted, Jeff.
I think it's Judy is next.
Okay, so we don't have four either. Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Okay.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Okay.
Al Stelukas, Joe, yes.
Okay. Public comment, we do have a public comment. And is our policy that we adopted in 2021, B E D H. I will read the public comment because of remote participation. And just to remind board members, we are here to listen, not to discuss or take any action. So just bear with me a minute while I find the comments, excuse me a second. Sorry, I'm having a little hard time finding it. Oh, boy. Excuse me a second, I'm sorry. Catherine, do you have a copy of it? You could just email to me because I'm just having a hard time locating my email right now.
I'm working on it right now, sir.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay, I found it, sorry. Sorry for the delay, everybody. So this is a public comment from Connie Maynard, and I will read it into the record. Good evening, my name is Connie Maynard, and I am a teacher here at Minuteman. I have been at Minuteman for 28 years and have been actively involved in the Minuteman community at many different levels. Currently, I am the department lead for humanities. I am also the lead for the community service club. The reason I'm writing this letter to the school committee is that I was, I am disheartened by a recent situation that I, against my will, was faced with. Our new superintendent decided that I had to administer a test from last school year and change a student's grade accordingly. I always treat all my students fairly, so I was surprised by her decision to override my grade with no conversation. The student in question was absent for several days during fourth term. Upon the student's return, there was ample time and opportunity to make up the missed test before the school year ended. I always keep my grade book up to date on Aspen, so the teacher and parents have access to the work missed during the absence. In addition, I spoke with the student on two separate occasions, encouraging said student to stay after school to take the test, which they failed to do. Sometime after grade were finalized and the school year ended, the student's parents contacted the school looking for the student to be able to take the missed test. Mr. Clement spoke with me several times about the situation and fully supported the grade given. Last month, Dr. Dawson met with the parents and overrode the principal's decision, deciding that the student would be allowed to take the missed test and have their grade changed. I was never included in this process or decision. This has also happened to another teacher of the same student. What kind of message was this sent to teachers and students? Minuteman is a vocational technical high school that is supposed to be preparing students for careers and/or college. And I think we do grave disservice to students when we don't hold them accountable for responsibilities similar to those that they could face in employment or college. As a teacher, I wonder where we go from here? Do we continue to make grade changes when parents insist, even though we know it's not in the best interest of either the student or the faculty? I sincerely hope that we haven't established a precedent in this matter. This decision has far-reaching implications for Minuteman teachers who work hard and are conscientious about their teaching, and they feel completely disheartened at the superintendent's decision. It also has implications for students who are conscientious and work diligently and follow absence protocol. I hope the school committee members will take this matter as seriously as the faculty does. And that concludes the comment by Connie Maynard. And I'd like to thank Ms. Maynard for submitting that. And as I said, it's our policy not to discuss these things at the same meeting where they are, where they have been presented. And once again, thank you to Maynard.
Mr. Ladoo, you're muted if you're speaking.
Was I muted the whole time I was reading that?
No, sir.
That's very weird, I didn't mute myself. Okay, we have consent agenda. And we're asking approval of the following draft minutes of November 15th, 2022. Approval of request for the disposal of surplus property. Approval of list of monthly grants and approval of list of monthly donations. Judy, I'm told that you have an amendment to the minutes. And so would you want to hold that agenda item?
Right, I was not present for the last meeting, unfortunately. So I try not to approve the minutes if I wasn't present.
Okay.
I abstain, so I abstain from the minutes only.
Similarly for me. But I thank, I thank our intrepid minutetakers for providing a very full and detailed account of the meeting I missed.
Okay, so why don't we have a vote on the other three items? And then, once that's done, we can have a separate motion on the minutes with the two extensions. So are there, anybody else want to hold any items on the consent agenda?
I move the consent agenda as modified.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Michael?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica?
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Al Stelukas, Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Chairs report, well, I don't have anything to report on because I just kind of found out after five o'clock that Pam was not going to be here. And in your packet, I believe we have all the goals for all our subcommittees for '22, '23. And I don't know if we typically go over them or if anybody has any comments on them. Somebody refresh my memory of how we've done that in the past.
Would you like a motion to approve this school committee goals and actions?
I would.
'22 to '23 as presented by, so moved.
Okay, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Michael?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Al Stelukas, Joe, yes. Chair, Chair Ladoo, a point of order, you still have to do the vote on the minutes.
Oh, sorry, thank you so much. Okay, so I will entertain to approve the minutes of November 15th, 2022, as amended.
Michael Ruderman Epstein.
Erica L Z.
We have to have a second.
We need a motion first.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, you have a motion.
I move the minutes as written.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Michael?
Michael Ruderman Arlington Epstein.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Concord, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington abstained.
Jeff Stuland Needham, yes.
Al Stelukas, Joe, yes.
Okay, it is passed.
Respectfully.
Respectfully, yes. Okay, student update, who?
A 1776 joke, anyone? Anyone?
No. Who is giving the student update tonight?
I'm going to get us started. And I am going to share my screen. If I can get the right one. Sorry, I have so many windows open. Okay, right here. Are you able to see my screen? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. And so, thank you, Chair Ladoo, school committee members. Tonight, we have our two student representatives, Lily Botan and Lyra Sasser, to give our student update.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. So the first thing that happened over the course of the month, there was the film festival, which was opened by the multimedia engineering career major in the theater. They showcased their films for the second annual Minuteman Multimedia Film Festival on Sunday, November 19th.
The next thing that happened was a pep rally. It was right before Thanksgiving break. Our fall sports coaches hosted a pep rally. And some of the events included a tug war between the shop teachers and academic teachers, a pie eating contest, and some of the staff even joined the cheerleaders for the routine. And then we have Skills USA. We're, we sent some students to Skills USA, and we're all very proud of how well they did there.
And so to present on behalf of Minuteman, our representatives from Skills USA. And I'm going to... There we go. Thank you, Lily and Lyra. And if we could have our representatives to present on the Skills USA.
Yes, thank you. I'm Felix, by the way, I was competing there. So we attended the Fall State Leadership Conference. Next slide, please. It was an overnight trip from Sunday, November 20th to the following Monday. Held at the Best Western Royal Trade Plaza in Marlboro. And 10 students from all four grades and spanning from six different shops attended. So there were two different groups. Half of the kids or the students worked on to understand the Skills USA framework on trainings around personal workplace and technical skills. Everyone was working together with other students from vocational schools around Massachusetts. On, oh yeah. And then the other half of the students participated in a community service project. Students were working. And students also had the opportunity to earn a leader award, which was only given to 50% of the attending members. Thank you.
All 10 of the students that we sent to the conference won. And we won two gold medals, four silver, four bronze, and two MVP awards. Freshman Leah from Arlington and a senior Cole from Acton won both a gold medal and an MVP award. Next slide, please. Sophomore Felix, who's here, was talking about the leadership award, which was only won by two people, which were Felix and Gavin, who's from Arlington. And Misty Ambrosia also won a gold medal in the advisor-only Fisillathon competition. Fisillathon is like planning for emergencies. And it's a new competition for Skills USA, Massachusetts. So they wanted advisors to demo it before students competed in it. Next slide, please. In the future, we have fundraisers and community service projects planned. And we will start the competition season in March with districts. And then we go to in-house in early April, states of the year.
You're muted?
Yeah. Sorry, we'll go to nationals in June is the end of it.
Just to brag on our students for one quick second. So my name is Christina Jazin, I'm one of the advisors. My co-advisors Denise Ambrosia and Emily Cotwaller are on tonight. But I just wanted to highlight that both of our student volunteers who spoke to you today are state medalists. And Felix actually went to the national competition last year and served as a national voting delegate. So two of the cream of the crop here promoting skills today. So just wanted you to know how hard they work.
Thank you. And I do want to say a special thank you to Ms. Jazin and Ms. Cotwell and Ms. Ambrosia for supporting our students. This is such an important opportunity for our students to gain skills that they will use for a lifetime. And I was so proud to be there to watch them receive their awards. And you can just see the pride on their faces. And I'm just, on behalf of Minuteman, we're so proud of you, all of you students, and for your success. And thank you for representing us so well at Skills USA. And we look forward to future competitions. And we're here to support you in any way we can. So congratulations and thank you very much.
Absolutely. On behalf of the school committee, congratulations, everybody. Really, you've done us proud, no question about it.
So Mr. Ladoo, that closes out our student updates.
Actually, I have one question, who won the tug of war?
Oh, from the pep rally?
Yes.
I'll let the students answer that one. Because the tug of, yeah. Do you want to say?
The academic teachers won.
Oh, okay. Wow, okay, thank you.
They also cheated.
But it was great fun. Yeah. So if you're okay with us moving to the next item, which is the superintendent's report, I would like to ask Mr. Cherryello to jump on and give us an update on our admissions.
All right, so thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Dawson, Mr. Ladoo. So just kind of wanted to update everyone kind of where we are in the process first. So we completed the vast majority of our kind of recruitment. So we've done our mailings, we did all of our school presentations. We had two showcase days. The last one we had was on December 6th, which were just for the towns of Acton and Needham, who were unfortunately unable to come to the regularly scheduled showcase day due to a professional development day in the Acton School District, Acton Foxborough School District, and a great wide field trip in Needham. But I just really want to thank both our students and our teachers for all their work on that. They really showcase everything that Minuteman is. And we know that the majority of the students who end up coming to Minuteman went to showcase day. That doesn't mean that every student who goes to showcase day ends up enrolling in Minuteman, but that day has a big impact on the students who ultimately come to school here. And a real thank you on that kind of alternate showcase day, because that's a school day, right? So it's a little bit disruptive, so, you know. But our teachers and students are great and flexible and made that happen. So I want to express my appreciation to everyone for that. We had our open house. So Mr. Clement, I'll apologize in advance, I'll steal your thunder a little bit. I have a slide on open house, I'll wait on that. And then last night, we had our virtual family information session, where myself and three of our current Minuteman parents, along with one of our seniors from Acton, presented to a number of families who are interested in the school. And what I think was the nicest piece of that entire presentation was this common theme from all three families who have very different children, right? They're, they have different personalities, different experiences coming out of eighth grade. But the one commonality was that all of those students love coming to school every day. And I know I didn't love going to school every day, I'm sure many of you didn't. So just the fact that we have a learning environment and community where young people enjoy coming to is really a testament to the entire community, students, faculty, staff, administration. So I just want to thank everyone for being part of that. Now we get into the clerical nitty-gritty of admission season. So we are in the process of collecting records, getting up, continuing to get applications. And then in early February, we will head out to our sending middle schools to do interviews. We have in the past had families come to us, but we want to make it an easier process for students and not put that burden on their families to have to find the time and the transportation to get to us. And kids do prefer the in-person interview versus the virtual one, which we've also offered in the past to cut down on at least the transportation piece. And for students who are not at one of our local middle schools, maybe attend a private school, we will start organizing their interviews after the holiday break. Just for everyone's, you know, to remind you, January 15th is what we call our priority deadline for our member town applicants, which means that all member town applicants who have completed the entire admissions process by February 15th will have priority over any member town student who applies after the 15th. So we'll continue to inform our families about that deadline to ensure that any student who is interested meets that deadline so they can give themselves the best opportunity to be enrolled at the school. It's not a guarantee, but it's going to give you the best chance. And then March 1st is when we are required to send out our initial offers of admission. Although if we're ready, we will do that earlier than that. Anybody have any questions on where we are before I move to the next slide? Okay. You can go to the next slide, I think I can't see everyone's face. So our open house is on Sunday, November 20th. We had over 270 families attend, which is around 1,000 guests. It's hard to fully get that number down. Again, another fantastic showcase by our students and our teachers about what we do here at Minuteman. And I found from my experience last year doing interviews with both the families and the students is that they didn't have any questions in those interviews because our staff had answered all of those open house, which is just, again, a testament to the knowledge and dedication that everyone who's part of these days brings to this process, right? And, you know, we don't, when we're educators, we don't have to think about admissions as part of our, you know, our, what we're going to be doing. But everyone really takes that as an important part of what we do. And one of the things that I noticed as we looked at some of the data from the open house is that we had a lot of students who weren't even in eighth grade yet, sixth, seventh, even younger than that. I'd say they made up about 20% of the guests who came, which I think is great for us, you know, planting that seed early. And that's between things like open house, our summer programming, our April break programming. So, you know, making sure people are knowledgeable about what we are and what we do. And, you know, just being welcomed into the community as early as possible. And then, there we go. And then, of course, the data, which everyone always likes to see. So we are up still from where we were last year. I will just tell you, just kind of looking, we had the data for like how every week goes for the entire year, for the last four years. And I will say that the gap was bigger. So it's 28 applications right now. I think it was like 60 or 70 recently. So we saw like a rush at the beginning this year. And this is the time of year we have historically seen the rush. And it's not as much now. So it might have just shifted earlier. But again, we still have another two months to go. So we'll see how that shakes out. We ended up, just for folks kind of thinking, February 15th, we had 303 applications. By this definition, that doesn't mean qualified application, that means submitted an application on February 15th. So we're only about 80 away from that. And just to give people a little bit of context of where we may end up in a couple of months. But that's where we are now. And if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cherryello. And, you know, great big thank you, kind of echoing what Mr. Cherryello said, to all of the staff and students to really put on very successful open houses. And just a little shout out to Madison, who is working with Mr. Cherryello and helping organize all of these events. So I just wanted to thank, and I think, I want to say, is it Ms. Horner? Is it Ms. Horner? Madison?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, Madison Horner.
She's a tremendous asset to the admissions office.
Yes, so I just wanted to acknowledge her efforts as well. And thank you, Mr. Cherryello, because this is a lot of, lot of time and energy, and it's paying off. So thank you so much. And next, we have Dr. Hool to follow up on the last MTI presentation. So, Dr. Hool?
Thank you, Dr. Dawson, and thank you, school committee. So what I've done on the next few slides is just kind of give snapshots of the progress MTI has made over the last three and a half or four years. So this first slide just shows raw and raw numbers. The green column indicates the COVID year, where we had to stop halfway through the program and go remote as every other program in the Commonwealth had to do. Advanced manufacturing has always been a struggle to populate. Automotive, you can see, please note that in 2018 and 19, automotive, construction, cosmetology, and welding metal fabrication were all postgraduate programs, which means that we had adult students, or students over 18, coming into the programs during the day and sharing instruction and instructional space with the high school students. 2019, '20, we moved all programs away from that format. We had a pretty robust enrollment. But then you can see, we have had to build up in the past few years. And we're at a point where you're getting well-known, people find us, people apply to us, and people enroll with us. The last column on the far right, if you see in automotive, we had eight students enroll, which means they met all the admission standards, they have done an interview, they had been accepted. But the double asterisk indicates that we were unable to run that class. We could not find a qualified instructor. And the instructor that we have had since 2019 did not undertake the process to start, did not undertake the steps necessary to start the process of being a Chapter 74 licensed instructor. So after three years, I was able to maintain his contract. So we had to tell those eight students that we had no program for them, and we continued to look for an automotive instructor. So that's kind of a snapshot of enrollment. Next slide, please. So then, there was a question at our last meeting, at the last school committee meeting, about completion rate. So overall, the first year, 2018, 2019, and keeping in mind that some of those programs were held during the day, we had a 92% completion rate. The COVID year, we dropped to 71%. The year immediately following, we did not have a building construction program, nor are we approved by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for a post-secondary Chapter 74 program in building construction. But we offered automotive, cosmetology, electrical, and welding. And then 21, '22 was a little bit better, fewer programs, but a higher completion rate. And of course, we are still in the midst of the 22, '23 probably a year. Next slide, please. And then these are participants by placement. Replacement can be either in a job related to the field, in a job, or attending additional training. So... In a job or attending um additional training. So. The first year, eighteen, nineteen, even if a student doesn't complete the program. Um, let's say they they separate from the program because they found a position in the field. We can count that as a positive placement. Uh, ninety-three percent positive placement in eighteen, nineteen. Um, a still high placement uh during the COVID year. On that dropped a little bit the first year back from COVID. Uh, we went up eleven percent last year, and I anticipate um an increase. In positive placements this year as well. I can share that, um, I'll wait, I'll wait till the end for that one. So that is our uh participants by placement. And then. I did a slide for our um CTI programs by cohort enrollment, completion, and placement. So I kind of. Put a lot of information on this one side. So our carpentry pre-apprentice program, which is a flagship program across the Commonwealth, if I may say so, ourselves. Uh, we've had four cohorts, three have been completed. Thirty-six students enrolled. We have the opportunity to enroll ten in each cohort. One cohort, um. One or two cohorts will be low ten, and then twenty-five of the thirty-six um completed. So that's um a pretty. Fair completion rate, but eighty percent. Of those students who completed, who wanted to get into a carpentry pre-apprenticeship did. There were some students, um, at least three that I can think of, two for medical reasons were not able to be hired, and one. One completer was not able to be hired because she requires a third shift job due to childcare challenges. Our CNC or advanced manufacturing program, again, very, it's been a very difficult program to populate. We've had one cohort. That completed with uh three students in it. Um. Three did complete, so that I I beg your pardon for that area, three completed. And one that we know of has been placed. Um, two students, despite our best efforts and the best efforts of their career center, have not been able to. Um, get in touch with the other two students that completed, um, but whom for whom we have no follow-up data. Um, plumbing, where we've started one cohort, and there are three students enrolled. Welding, we've had one cohort this year, as of today, can now say one cohort completed. With four students, we had their recognition ceremony this evening. And I'm happy to report that one student who was employed over the course of his training. Has received two pay increases by virtue of the skills and the certifications that he's received through our program. And now that he's done, um, he can go back and and share with his employer that he has three welding certifications and can now ask for another pay increase. Last week, those four students were tested in the process of stainless steel welding. All four passed. So they left us with an OSHA thirty certification, which is. Different than the rest of our post-secondary students who do an OSHA test. They all achieved the hot work certification, and all four received three American Welding Society recognized. Prudential by virtue of the skill and demonstrating those skills that they've learned. Um, one student who recently. Got his stainless steel certification and is on his way to apply to the electric boat facility where they work on submarines and do a lot of. Um, repair work with stainless steel. So that is his. Goal. And then the two other completers are on their way to look for employment, which we provide in conjunction. With um the career centers, we will support them both um in their job search. And then we had a program with the Northeast Advanced Manufacturing Consortium, a robotics technician cohort. We had one cohort that cohort completed. We had a total enrollment of six. Five um students. Participated. Three students were previously employed, so they were going to work as well as coming to school. And this evening at their recognition ceremony, I learned that one student has gained employment at a company called Brooks. They make semiconductors. And this student will be on a trial basis there for a hundred and eighty days with some benefits. And if none of his semiconductors come back. The company will hire him on full-time with additional benefit with a an additional benefits package. Uh, so needless to say, we had a really great um evening. Tonight. With those two groups. So then if we can have the last slide, please. On November twenty-eighth, we had our inaugural open house, and um. We had sixty-six participants from thirty towns. We had four industry partners there who who were not there to um. Hire per se. They were there to share why they're partnering with MTI in the district and what. Um, positions in their fields. Mean, you know, what kind of work is done, what kind of salaries, or what kind of benefits there are, what is the culture of the business? We also had one mass higher career center representative and one workforce investment act. Office representative. Um, so both adult clients and um youth clients could ask questions. And then the the last picture that you see on the bottom left, those are um open house attendees filling out applications. For our programs. And we collected twenty-five applications that evening. We are up to um twenty students interested in the welding program. We have had ten applications for the carpentry building program, and there are also. Two more um information sessions to that program. We have interest in robotics, we have interest in advanced manufacturing. And uh, if I could bring you back to, um, so that's on CTI, you can go back to the. Minuteman Technical Institute side with our um ten-month program. I would just like to share with the school committee that. And so we basically done one session for three and a half months. And this group of students have paid fifty-three percent of their tuition already to date, which. Um, for someone who has to keep looking at the budget with the business office. That is an incredibly good um rate of getting their money to us and paying their. Tuition and taking responsibility for their education. I'm really very pleased. With how this group has taken upon themselves to. Be um conducting themselves in this program. So that was an update from Minuteman Technical Institute. I appreciate the support from Superintendent Dawson. I appreciate the support. From my fellow administrators very much, and I also appreciate sincerely the support from the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hool. And on behalf of Minuteman, we want to thank you and Ms. Quinones for all the um hard work. That you, you know, both put into um, you know, growing Minuteman Technical Institute. I know that, you know, since I've been here, I have met. You know, organizations that have are coming here to learn from you how to um do this, you know, back in their um districts and organizations. So. I think that uh you've done a great job in setting a model for others to um try to follow. So congratulations and thank you. I was here at the open house. It was really exciting to see um so many people um here and very excited. So um, thank you very much. And Mr. Ladoo.
Yes.
Um, if we want to pause, I don't know if there are any questions.
I was gonna ask, does anybody have any questions to Dr. Who?
I see Mr. Luca's hand up.
I don't have a question, but I was the person who asked for the follow-up, and I'm very happy to see it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking. It was kind of a fun exercise.
Yeah.
Judy.
Um, I'd just like to add, um, thank you for this great work. This is really um very encouraging and um. It it's just, it's just really fun to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Dawson, I guess we can.
Yes. So, thank you. Um, and to, you know, it it takes, it takes. All ends of um. Our stakeholders and 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 the spectrum to do what we do here. And so why we're gonna, we're going to shift from our post-secondary um education institute. To our other um very important set of stakeholders, which is our Minuteman Parent Association. And so I'm gonna ask um. Ms. Pessigna, if she wouldn't mind uh sharing um. Hosting rights, but to to get us started, uh, Mr. Clement, would you like to just kind of introduce? On this kind of read this slide while um Ms. Lawton, I think gets ready to present her section.
Yep, I'm here. Thanks.
Okay, great. So.
Okay, so are you ready, Ellen, or? Oh, okay. Well, um, while she's getting ready.
Sure, I'm here.
You're there? You're ready?
Yeah, I'm happy to walk through this and then.
All right, fire away.
Okay, great. Thanks so much, Mr. Clement, Dr. Dawson, and greeting School Committee. So glad to be joined here. Uh, with my as uh president of the MPA since uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and. Working with Courtney Swern, who's here as vice president, and to welcome some new leadership. Um, including tonight, we have Sylvia Dominguez Bode, who is our treasurer, and Will Barker, who will be our secretary, are both here and. Exceedingly fortunate to have uh parents who are stepping up into leadership roles to try to support the work of the Minuteman Parents Association. Um, I thought that I would just take a moment if I'm able to share screen and just walk you through. I don't know if you can give permission for screen sharing, uh, but.
All set.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much. Uh, just walk you through. Uh, sort of our pride and joy and where we do most of our communicating is here uh at the Minuteman Parents Association website. Just to give you a sense of who we are and what we do, and our uh mission really is no surprise as a parents' association is to support. Uh, the students and the school and to act as a bridge with parents. And uh for longstanding, we have uh dedicated ourselves to doing fundraising to support. Scholarships for graduating seniors who are in need of resources, either for their trade or uh to go on to secondary education. And so. Uh, for example, last year, we delivered scholarships to nine seniors, thousand-dollar scholarships, and we were able to support some other. Um, um, other student uh donations uh to support. Uh, graduating students and uh run a what I think is very popular teacher appreciation week. That includes a fabulous coffee truck. It's very. Popular. Um, and we also uh have a a series of other events and activities that help engage parents. I think especially, as you all well know. Um, parents are really dying for a connection to the school, uh, given the geography of the school. And so we. Uh, last year ran a very successful parent engagement event for especially for parents who hadn't been in the building yet. Uh, we did the same this fall. Um. And welcomed Dr. Dawson and Mr. Clement and had about a hundred uh parents, uh, maybe seventy-five parents who joined to. Learn about the MPA and hear from uh our leadership. And so um, I want to invite, I'm gonna just click through here. For all of you who are all Minuteman supporters. Um, we have an online store that was built by a parent, and we use it as a fundraising mechanism. It's a spirit wear store. So we would love it if you would also uh patronize our our spirit wear store. It's got some great uh. Uh, Minuteman merch. And again, everything that we earn there goes towards uh MPA uh scholarships for students. Um. And I want to invite Courtney Swern, if you want to unmute, just hop in and and sort of give an update for the committee about some of our fundraising activities. That would be great.
Sure. Thanks, Ellen. Um, hi, Courtney Swern, um. Acting Vice President, have been and will remain so for at least another year. My son is a junior in multimedia. Um, so what I have done in the last um. Two years is to set up some passive fundraising programs, um, which make it easy for people to. Donate through Amazon Smile. We've done um five dine-out events that raised a thousand dollars. Um, we've done Shop Wilson Days, and we have another one in January. Um, we will advertise that after the break.
Great.
Um, the Battle Green Run, which we had, we participated in November, was awesome this year. We had a huge team. Um, we raised over fifteen hundred dollars just from online fundraising, and we won't know probably until early January what our. Portion of the proceeds from that are. Um, last year, we raised about three thousand dollars. So I'm really hoping to get at least that much. This year, which was really exciting. Um, the biggest chunk uh of our fundraising has been spiritware. Um, in the last two years. And what we're gonna be launching in January is um kind of rebranding from um. Talking about dues, uh, which used to be required to be a member. Now we consider all parents and guardians members of the parent association. And we, we are gonna start our first annual fund. Um, so basically to put out messaging that instead of um asking for dues. Um, to say, here's what we do, what we do and how much we spend. Uh, suggest an amount and just ask parents to make a one-time uh donation. Uh, to the annual fund to support our activities. So. Um, I think that's what I had, but um, thank you. Thank you to everyone on here. It's nice to. Uh, be asked to speak to the school committee. So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Courtney. And uh, again, appreciation for Courtney uh in her her bridging role into uh with serve with new leadership and. Uh, and really appreciating uh Mr. Clement and Dr. Dawson, and especially behind the scenes, uh. Uh, Rosemary, as well as Julia, who are are helping to keep us on track, and uh Dan O'Brien as well in communications, helping to respond to. We have a Facebook page that. Uh, we try to uh answer questions for parents. And uh, Dan O'Brien has been enormously helpful in um pressing out some of the communications to get parents. Uh, to participate in some of our activities. And so, you know, I think we've made a lot of changes in uh post-COVID in particular. Uh, it used to be that we had meetings in person, right? Like most of us. And I think having virtual meetings, the MPA has our. Uh, December meeting is on uh Thursday night uh virtually, and that has allowed for a lot more parent participation, given our geography. Um, and dispersment in terms of parents. So appreciating uh all these opportunities to connect with the commit- committee, let you know what we are up to. And uh seek your support um in the work that we're doing. Really appreciate it. Questions?
Jeff.
So uh, again, thank you for everything you do, and I'm especially gonna thank you for um. Showing me your uh your online store here because I definitely need a new cap. And a Minuteman cap is just gonna fit the bill. So thank you for the reference to the store there. I've already been on it while we were talking.
Awesome. You can also hop in there and make a donation. So you can think about that as well. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Great.
Okay, excellent. So I just wanna um. Thank you, Ms. Latin, Mrs. Zorn, for all of your leadership and support. Uh, we cannot do what we do without um our parents. So we just really appreciate. Um, and look forward to our continued collaboration. So thank you. And Mr. Ladoo, if you're okay, um, I would like us to continue. Um, with our. Uh, superintendent's report because we have another parent group that um we would like to update you on. Uh, their work, and I'm going to ask Dr. Pearl to um jump on and share with us, provide us with an update. There we go, on Special Education Parent Advisory Council.
Okay, sounds good.
Excellent.
Great. Uh, thank you, Dr. Dawson. Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here to give you an update on our CPAC, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which is a group of parents. Um, whose job is to help exchange information between parents of students receiving special education services in the district. Um, we have two new co-chairs this year that I'm very excited about, Mr. Will Barker, whose name you've already heard tonight. Um, so he's a very involved parent. And Ms. Sharon Musto. Um, both of them are new to leading um leadership positions in the Minuteman CPAC. Um, so they. So they have both gone through very recently the Mass PAC training, which is put on by the Federation of Children with Special Needs. It's a specific training for officers of CPACs. We've already reviewed the bylaws and updated those a little bit. And then our next steps were are to plan our annual Parents' Work Workshop and then plan the rest of the CPAC meetings. We are looking at how we can work with the MPA, maybe have a meeting after the general MPA meetings so that we can make it more convenient for parents who want to attend both meetings and not have to juggle schedules, et cetera, like that. So we're just getting started with this new leadership. I'm really excited. I want to thank them both for their time. They've really hit the ground running in a very short amount of time and kind of tackled a couple really big things, which is great. So thank you to them. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, any questions from the board? It's not. Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
I believe, Ms. Mr. Luca.
Oh, no, she's came in late. Okay.
I just wanted to thank you for having the report on CPAC. It's a very important group. And I know that Pam Nurse, who who has a specialty in this area, would have liked to hear your report. So just thank you. I'm thanking you on behalf of her, even though I didn't get permission to do that.
Very welcome.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Pearl. We know that, you know, it it takes a lot, right? To do all of the things that we do. So I just want to thank you. And it's greatly appreciated, your work and effort. And so next we have just a quick update from me. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Elsie, did you?
Yeah, no, that's okay. Yeah, I just had a question. So moving forward, will the co-chairs be presenting reports to this school committee, the co-chairs for the special, the CPAC?
I'm sorry, was the question whether they're going to be presenting to the school committee? Yes, we, that can definitely be arranged. One of the responsibilities of the co-chairs of the CPAC is to speak with the superintendent on a regular basis and provide feedback and suggestions. So, you know, based on those conversations, we absolutely can present to the school committee on an ongoing basis as well. Thank you.
And yes, and thank you to Mr. Barker and Ms. Musto for their leadership and helping us lead this work. So, thank you. And if there aren't any other questions or comments on this topic, I'm just going to move on. I'm continuing to work on my entry plan. I'm continuing to listen, observe and learn. I'm continuing to meet with various stakeholders. The latest legislative elected official that I met with was Senator Cronin and learned about his commitment to the workforce development. And thank you to Ms. Elsie for joining me at that meeting. And, you know, I'm trying to get more voice from the parents. And so we've been conducting our parent town hall meetings. And so far, we've met with Arlington, Needham and Lexington. This coming week, we are meeting in Dover and this weekend, we're, we have a couple of meetings. I want to say Bolton and maybe Lancaster this weekend. So and thank you to our school committee members that were able to join me at these meetings. We've had, you know, a good turnout of parents, some that have signed up and then some that just showed up and have been great conversation. And just really hearing their appreciation for Minuteman, really hearing the appreciation for our staff and all of, you know, a lot of great things that Minuteman is offering their students. And then, you know, just kind of identifying some areas where they might have had some underings or some things that they would like to see us look into further. And as I collect this information, I will be reporting out to the school committee as well as our larger stakeholder group with our staff and students and parents, the findings from my entry plan, listen, observing and learning. And so we'll be working on that as we start wrapping up my entry plan here within the next month and a half or so. So I just want to say that, I believe, concludes the superintendent's report. And if there aren't any other questions or comments, Mr. Ludu, I would like to pass it to Mr. Clement for his principal's report.
Absolutely. Principal Clement.
Okay, so just happy to announce our Students of the Term, Students of the Term is a program started by Assistant Principal Tillsley, where he solicits on the faculty to find out who's really just been a good overall citizen around the community. He takes in nominations and, you know, he'll choose who he thinks is really demonstrated the kind of character that we want to see. If he needs a tie-breaking vote or a little help, I get to vote with him. So for ninth grade, it's Nathan Reed. He's from Concord. From tenth grade, it's Caitlin Terrell. She's from Dedham. Tyler Barard from Lancaster is our eleventh grader, and Alice Dalton is our twelfth grade choice from Arlington. Nathan is still exploring right now. Caitlin is in our environmental science program. Tyler is is in our welding program. And Alice Dalton is our, like, one of our electrical students. So we have a pretty good range of, you know, between metal fab and environmental. And who knows where Nathan's gonna land when we gave him his certificate, which is part of the program. After we got done scaring him to death by showing up together, Brian and I, he was in programming and web and and having a great time. So maybe that's where he'll end up. I don't, I don't really know. You know, the world is his oyster. So congratulations to them. They're preparing a little information for for Mr. O'Brien to make a press release. And we'll be treating them to lunch in the district restaurant with myself and Brian and a couple of teachers. So it'll be a nice, nice way, especially, you know, it's a nice way to kind of, you know, roll into the break. Otherwise, we're, you know, we're just into second quarter now. The picture that you see is, you know, instituted what I'm calling Clement's Civic Challenge. So I'm challenging students to work their memorization skills by putting out, you know, asking them to memorize certain things. So for example, we had the preamble of the Constitution. This, this particular challenge right now is the memorizing and reciting the First Amendment. So really, kids can just come to my office and see me in the caf or in the hall, and they just stop me. And, you know, we go through this whole thing. And if they are successful, I, you know, like in this case, it's a little bandana that we have or a pin or something. I've tried to give them some kind of prize. So that's underway. The community service projects are in full swing. You know, we have Toys for Tots happening with the National Honor Society, our Interact Community Service Club. Is doing a great job collecting winter coats and garments. And, you know, it's just really nice to see the kids kind of coalesce around that and fill those bins up. And winter sports are underway. Boys and girls basketball, you know, boys and girls also competing in swimming. We're running cheer for the first time, you know, as a, as a winter sport. So that's exciting. And we have our, we have our hockey team as well. I really want to give a shout out to to John Fusco, who has really picked up the slack. Well, you know, we've, we haven't had our our usual folks in, you know, taking over for athletics. So John's really stepped in and really done a fantastic job, really working the program and really bringing sports up. We had a sports banquet last week, which was, which was nice, excellent attendance, fant- actually, probably the best attendance I've seen. Really filled every seat. And it's just really nice to see sports really taking off with greater and greater prominence at the school. So on to second quarter and, you know, a couple of days away from break. But who's counting how many days? Not me, right? But if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Principal Clement? If not, thank you so much, George.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to move on to subcommittee reports in the absence of our intrepid Chair of the School Billing Committee, Mr. Aiken, and we'll make a presentation on the Billing Committee's work.
Thank you, Mr. Ludu. Yes, Mr. Spalding asked me to to present, and I just want to provide you an update on the North Building Project. Since the last report, given the last meeting, the walls panels have been delivered on November thirtieth. The structural steel was delivered last Friday, December ninth. We're a little bit behind schedule because of a delay at the border. The steel came in from Canada. So it took a day or two to get over the border. The erection will start of the building will start next week and talk, start on Monday nineteenth. And it will take approximately four weeks, which places it around mid-January. But given that, you know, we have, we're in the middle of the snow season and so forth. It may take another week or so, but it will be all completed by February first. They assure us that. So unless we have some really bad weather, our instructors and students will begin addressing the inside, taking care of the HVAC, the plumbing and the electrical parts of the buildout early in the start of this, beginning in the start of the second semester. Is there any questions?
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, we will move on to the Communication Access and Admission Subcommittee, Mr. Stulwin.
Thank you very much. So the, at its last meeting, the CAA focused on two issues. One issue is, are we going to have a much longer waiting list? And we decided that we need to allow time to move on a little bit further before we decide if that was a, something that we really had to look into. At that time, we had a, a larger increase in number of applications than we do now. So maybe that won't become as big an issue. We'll have to wait a little bit longer. But the biggest issue that's taking up most of our time is the possible expansion of the school to allow another town or so to join. And the, the gold standard for this is that all nine of our member towns have to say yes. And we haven't talked to them formally yet. Because we know that there's a number of questions that we have to explore before we have enough credibility to be able to talk to them. And that exploration requires a lot of work on the part of the administration. And although there are going to be a lot more questions that we don't know about yet, let me just share a few of the ones that the committee has been talking about. So you'll know the extent of what we have to learn in order to have a, a successful discussion with our member town. So here are a few of them. What are the costs, both initial and ongoing, for new town to join the district? What is the financial impact, both initial and ongoing, for the current member towns if a new town is added? What is the impact on slot availability for current town students if a new town joins without an expansion to a eight-hundred-student-capacity school? What is the operating cost and impact of expanding to an eight-hundred-student-capacity school and on and on and on? So we gave the administration, the administration team, a very large task, which was to start to answer some of those financial, both financial impact questions and education impact questions. If we were to expand the district, both if we were to remain the same size we have, or if we were to expand to eight-hundred students. And as you're going to see, because I believe that you had a presentation materials in your pack, and I think that they're prepared to give a presentation on this. You're going to see that the administration did a enormous amount of work in giving us a surprising number of preliminary answers to these questions. So they're going to give you a presentation. We're going to talk a little bit about it. And then I'm going to ask for a sense of the committee on a question that I have. So if the administration is prepared to give a presentation, we'd be, I think we'd be happy to hear it right now.
Okay, who is going to speak?
I'm going to ask Mr. Aiken and Mr. Camerata to join me as we present. And just to let everyone know, the Communications Access and Admissions Subcommittee chaired by Mr. Stulwin and the other two school committee members, Ms. Norris and Ms. Luca. And so here, you know, I think first and foremost, I just want to start and we'll, we'll get into this a little bit later as well. But, you know, first and foremost, we looked at how can we do this work without compromising the integrity of Minuteman and what Minuteman offers? So it first and foremost, that was always at the, at the front of our thinking and processing because we do not want to jeopardize what makes Minuteman special. And so as we kept that at the forefront, we continue to take a look at how are our town member seat allocations determined? And it, you know, we start with our October report to the state on enrollment. And just as a reminder from our regional agreement, the seat allocations are calculated using a two-pronged approach. First, we calculate fifty percent of, the calculation is based on a four-year rolling enrollment average of the members enrollment in grades nine through twelve. The second fifty percent of the calculation is based on equal share of the total seats. And then these two calculations are then added together to provide the percent of the total member share for each member. The total member share then is multiplied by the total number of seats to determine actual member seat allocation. And what you're going to be seeing here in the next few slides, please note that there are going to be some rounding errors. And, you know, so when you look at some numbers that were, will constitute some of the errors is the rounding. As you know, there is not a partial, you know, percentage of a student. So if we take a look at what does that mean here, seat allocation calculations by numbers. Here are our nine town members, and you'll see he listed here are the last four-year enrollment numbers. And then, whoops, sorry about that. This column here, you'll see then the four-year average. And then also the total four-year, total average enrollment for the district. Then you have the percent total for the four-year average in the next column. That is based on, if you take a look at the four-year average, what percent of that is of the total enrollment average? And that's how we're calculating this percent total four-year average. And then the fifty percent of the four-year average, so you take that and divide it by two. And then the fifty percent equal member share, you take the five oh three average and you divide it by nine to get the equal share. And Mr. Aiken and Mr. Camera, I'm going to ask you to please keep me honest and make sure I'm explaining this correctly because it, it can get complicated in verbal explanation. So, but, yeah, and and in doing that math, that is how we get the member percent total share. So please keep this column in mind because it's going to show up again in future slides.
Just one correction, Dr. Dawson, if I may. So the fifty percent four-year average, of course, is the, is half of the percent total four-year average. The fifty percent equal member share is taking fifty percent and dividing it by nine. That's an equal member share. So in this case, it's five point five six percent. You'll notice that we carried out the four-year average and all the other figures out to two decimal points. However, when we get to the actual seat member allocation, we're dealing with whole numbers. So that is one of the reasons why you'll, you will see rounding here because we don't have, we can only accept whole students. So up or down is where the rounding error is going to go. One important thing to notice too, just to keep us honest, is that fifty percent for your average share, all these columns should add up to fifty percent. And then the fifty percent plus fifty percent equals a hundred percent. So for those who are new to the Minuteman formula, you could think about it as our form of government here where our House of Representatives share is the fifty percent for your average share. And your equal member share or your Senate share is the fifty percent equal member share. Add those together to get your total seat allocation, your percentage times one eighty. times one eighty will give you your seat allocation.
Thank you, Mr. Camerata. And appreciate that you made that clarification, thank you. And so like Mr. Cameron just stated here, the member seat allocation, and this is going on based on a hundred eighty seats. So that's important to note as well, because the next slide, we're going to talk about that as well. Just as a reminder that we got the hundred and eighty seats, because when this building was built at eighty-five percent capacity, it was designed six hundred and twenty-eight students. So when you extrapolate that out to one hundred percent capacity, that is seven hundred and twenty seats. And then when you divide that by the four grades, that's a hundred and eighty per grade will give us the seven hundred and twenty. So just keeping that in mind. So as we go on to the next slide, we're going to do some comparing now. And again, this is, remember that last slide, we said that member percent total share? So that column should equal a hundred percent like it does here. Now, when we take a look at the initial seat allocation based on the hundred and fifty-seven seats, that is the breakdown of how many seats that each town received. Then, when we bump that up to one hundred and eighty seats per grade, the number of seats for each town increased. And on the fourth, fifth column here, you'll see that Acton increased by three seats, Arlington five, Walton two, et cetera. If we keep increasing and saying if we are able to increase to two hundred, and where that two hundred is coming from, because this building is built for seven hundred and twenty, we are, you know, taking a look at what are the options of creating additional classroom space in the East Tremont Building? And if we're able to create space there, then that's where we would be able to increase to two, two hundred per grade. So if doing that, then you see in the last column, the number of seats that each town would increase by.
Dr. Dawson, if I can interrupt for one second?
Yes, please.
I just wanted just one more clear, point is that these are, these are allocations based on FY twenty-four numbers, it not would have been if you were, we're still at one fifty-seven at the start of the nineteen, FY nineteen season or nineteen twenty season. So these are based on today's numbers. So if we had, we were still at one fifty-seven, that would be the allocation. And then the one eighty is what would be, if we, as we go to one eighty for this coming year and so forth.
Thank you. That, that is very important to note as well. Okay, so if we go to the next slide, now we're starting to take a look at what would be the impact of the allocation of seats to our nine towns if a new district member were to be added? And for just easier math purposes, we allotted the new member town, as you can see at the bottom, below Stowe, a new member, that if their percent total for the four-year average was ten percent, that's just makes math easier, right, with the ten percent? Then recalculating here, the fifty percent for your average share for each town is the next column. And then, of course, the equal member share. Everyone, in this scenario, let's get the five percent. And then you add up the two fifty percent calculations. And then the next column would give you the member percent total share. How does that break out in seats? Then you go to the next column. And again, based on the one hundred and eighty seats with the new member, these would be the new seat allocations. And the last column does show the variance or the change with the new town added. Keeping in mind, obviously, there's a decrease, but let's go to the next slide. Here, we're taking a look at, we carried it over from the slide before, if we had a hundred and eighty seats, the member seat allocation of no new member at a hundred and eighty seats, that's just the reminder, right, of where we were before adding a new town. But here, before that is when we have the new town. So the, in red, that first column in red shows the difference. When adding a new town, these towns would go decrease seat allocations by the number in red. Next set, we're saying, well, what would happen if we increased it to two hundred seats per grade? In blue, and then the member seat allocation with no new member. So here in the blue, you've got new member, no new member, and then the last column showing the difference. What's significant here is that if you look at and compare the two columns that are highlighted in the blue, what you see is that they are the same. So initially, yes, at a hundred and eighty, if we increase to a hundred and eighty seats, which we have, and we add a new town, there is a decrease in seat allocations. But once we hit the two hundred per class mark, the seat allocations is the same as when it was a hundred and eighty. So the hundred and eighty, remember, is also an increase from the very initial one fifty-seven when we first started. So I hope, I hope, do I have everyone with us so far? Yes, Mr. Stulwin?
I just wanted to point out to the membership that one of the initial concerns about some of our member towns when we were discussing this with them informally is if we add a new member town, would we have a reduction in possible slots allocated? And what this demonstrates is that if we go to two hundred students, there is no loss, overall loss of seats for them. Even if we, if we consider our current gain of seats at our, our a hundred and eighty-size freshman class as our new standard, we have the ability, if it is cost-effective, to move up to two hundred students and thus mitigating their concern about losing seats. So that's the, the primary importance of this analysis is that their concern is perhaps not as justified as they think it is.
Thank you, Mr. Stulwin. And so then this kind of goes back to how I started, right? One of the, the things that really stands out for Minuteman is, you know, students are choosing to come here because of the opportunities and the career tech pathways that we offer. And, you know, I think we pride ourselves in ensuring that our students, most of our students, as best as possible, are placed in one of their top three choices after freshman year exploratory. So if you kind of take a look at our, some of our historical numbers here, you can see exploratory year, like two thousand eighteen, we had a number of students, a hundred and twenty-three. And then the way their shop placement choice, and then the percent placement. And then, as you see over the years, the number of students increases. And even in two thousand twenty, with our highest number of students at a hundred and ninety-one, we were still able to place eighty-nine percent of our students with their first choice. So we said that our, you know, our cap was a hundred and eighty right now to be at seven hundred and twenty. So if you're taking a look at one hundred and eighty-eight, at a hundred and eighty-eight students, we are able to place ninety-six percent of them in their first choice. And then, so between, you know, a hundred and eighty-eight, a hundred and ninety-one, as we get near two hundred, we're still within the top percent of being able to place the students in their first choice. Because the last thing we want to do is create a scenario where our students are not getting one of their top three choices. Because if they can't get what they're coming here for, then they're going to stop coming, right? So we just wanted to be able to kind of continue to always remember, like, you know, this is part of that integrity that we don't want to dilute by adding more students. So the factors that impact capital assessments, because, you know, this first half is really about seat allotments. And, you know, there's, there were a number of slides that we could have shown playing out different scenarios with the actual cost. But because that is so, there's so many moving parts to that, and we end in very intricate with different scenarios that we didn't want to show and play out actual numbers in that sense to send out any numbers that are hypothetical. So that's why we left those numbers out. But the thing that's important here is that, you know, the, the factors that will influence the cost to our towns, of course, enrollment, as towns enrollment increases, their cost increases. Because in increasing enrollment increases the four-year rolling average. And then the seats or the not percent of seats of students from a new town should be added will also have an impact on our capital assessments. The other piece that we have to keep in mind too is that as we add additional students, we will need additional staff. So all of those factors impact, well, this is what's going to impact capital assessments, these bullet items, and then, of course, the operating costs by staffing we would need to meet the needs of the increased student enrollment overall. So where we are currently at, you know, determining will there be a buy-in? If yes, what is the mechanism for determining what that buy-in should be? Should this apply then to new members? Or just the previous members? And then, new members, meaning, you know, they've not been a part of Minuteman before. And then, of course, previous members, towns that were with us that chose to leave. And if they want to return, you know, so who should have a buy-in if there is one? And then, you know, once that's determined, if there is a buy-in, what will the payment terms be? Is it an all upfront? Or is it an installment over, and if so, over what term? Like how many? The duration of the payment plan? So those are some of the questions that we had as far as next steps. And then, of course, starting with some of the questions that Mr. Stulwin had, is this something that the school committee would like to move forward with? Because again, we have not gone to the towns. And we would need to do that fairly soon. And just for clarification, this is not anything that can happen anytime, like, it's not a quick thing, right? Because like Mr. Stulwin said, we do need to go to all of the towns. And all towns must unanimously vote one way or the other. And because of the way timeline goes, it's, you know, if for some some lucky fortune, I guess, if we were able to expedite and things that happened rather in a very timely fashion, the earliest that we would take a new town and new students would be fiscal year twenty-five. But more realistically, it would be fiscal year twenty-six. And Mr. Stulwin, that concludes our report.
Hey, thank you very much. Now, at the CAA meeting, they also showed us preliminary models of the financial impact of adding a number towns. And if we add another town or two, the financial impact is generally quite positive. Because you have them taking up some of the capital, ongoing capital costs. And as you get to eight hundred students, even though we have to add more staff, it's generally still an improvement in the assessments of our member towns. But this is just preliminary, because the models are very complicated. And it's taken them, I think they've done a great work in bringing us preliminary models. But we have to take the models to another step. And we eventually have to talk to our member towns if they want to pursue this further. Now, generally speaking, I believe that their preliminary, preliminary information demonstrates that the answers to all the questions pretty much are in the positive. That there is no clear negative to having a, a new town or two join, depending on if they're a good match for us or not. So the CAA is interested in moving forward with this, but we didn't want to spend any more time or effort unless the school committee is also interested in moving forward. Now, based on the timeframe we have, we cannot, even if we wanted to, it would be impossible to get all our ducks in a row for this spring town meetings. So the earliest that our, our member towns would vote for this is probably the following spring town meetings. But even with that large lead time, to do all the things that need to be done in order to determine if there are serious people who want to join us and to vet them and to create really rock-solid estimates of costs and impacts, we really have to get going. So my question is, I'm not asking this as a formal vote. And the CAA is in favor of this. So this is what I would like to get from the sense of the committee. Should the administration and the CAA continue pursuing the possibility of expanding the Minuteman District with a target date of early March twenty twenty-three for an initial formal information discussion meeting with appropriate representatives from all our current member towns? Meaning I'm putting a stake in the mud, we're putting a stake in the mud for timing. And we're saying, the stake in the mug is and mud is saying that in order to even be ready for the following town meeting, we have to start having serious conversations with our member towns, and not just one or two, but all of them in about the March timeframe. So what the sense of, of the school committee would be, would be for the CAA and the administration to continue on the path it's going now. And to target early March, March for a meeting in which we have all the representatives come in from our member towns, appropriate ones, whatever that means, to have an initial formal discussion of this. And a Q and A session and a presentation like the one that we were given today, but far more complete, because they would have another few months to work on it. So that's what I'd like to know. And other CAA members should throw in their two cents. And I'd like to get a sense of the school committee, whether they want us to continue on this or not. It's a lot of work, so unless we want to move forward, then if not, we can take a vacation. But I'm in favor of moving forward, and the CAA members are in favor of moving forward after we've seen the numbers. So
Thank you, thank you, everyone who's been number crunching all this time. This, this was, it's obvious how much work this is. But this was done very clearly and succinctly, so much appreciated. Quite honestly, nobody likes surprises. So if we're going to do this, I say it, the, the earlier we can communicate with all the member, current member towns, the better. You know, there's a lot of long-range planning that's involved for all of us. Every town has different things going on, and I would just put it on the table. So I would be very much in favor of something in the next, this spring.
Any others? I guess I would say, Jeff, and Finance Subcommittee did have the advantage of seeing this presentation last week, and we appreciate it. And it doesn't make a lot of sense, does make a lot of sense. And I certainly would support moving forward with a meeting next, you know, in, in, you know, March timeframe. I think the only thing we may need to be prepared for is I, I really feel that some of our, our member communities are going on, going to want to see some kind of buy-in for any new, new members. And I'm, and I'm not even making a distinction between prior members and new members. So I think we So I think we need to really think about that, have a strategy or have even some kind of formula we can throw out. Because I I I suspect, I suspect that may be a big issue with with our with our members as well.
My comment with that is very simple. If they're buying into the district and they're buying a portion of the school.
Right.
So they have, there has to be a buy-in. That to me is um not negotiable. There has to be a buy-in exactly how we. Uh figure out what a fear buy-in is. That's another thing we have to look at. But yes, there has to be a buy-in because they're owning part of the building.
Right. So I think we need to be prepared to address that when we do have this, this uh district-wide meeting. Others?
I appreciate.
I'm sorry.
Uh, you can talk to Michael. I already have shared my views on the committee, so.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
I I appreciate the work that goes into this and um yes, we need, we need to talk about those provisions of. Uh the equity stake. That we could call it. Uh but yes, it's 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 a opportunity I'd like to pursue. Thank you so much.
Alice.
Um, I'm very much in favor of of looking at this. I don't see a downside to looking at something like this. And um. I just wanted to say that the um, the slot allocation formula is really a um. It's based on the current reality of the last four years, and that is a choice that the school district has made. It's not set in stone anywhere. Just how we happen to do it at the moment. So um that slot allocation formula is something that can be reconsidered by the administration. If there's a better way to do that, it just happens to be how we've done it. It's not um. It's not set anywhere in stone, uh but it's something that the school committee approves annually, how however you choose to do it. Um, but I think this, the member towns would probably find the opportunities. Uh of having new members um advantageous. Uh especially if they want to be members. Uh the difference between the departing communities when they left is they didn't wanna be members. So, you know. Having willing participants is is a whole different matter and uh would be beneficial, I think, for the district.
Okay. Erica. I'm mute, Erica.
Yeah, yeah. Hi, thanks. Thank you for doing all that work. Um, I I too would be in favor of um moving forward with this. And I'm looking into it for uh further and um and then, of course. Also looking very carefully at the question as far as like how many. More new member towns and which member towns, which you you did mention, Jeff. Um, so that would be something um to look into further for sure.
Very well, then. I think that I have a uh a sense of the school committee. We will move forward with this. Uh, the end of the road, we cannot see what's gonna happen in the future. We don't know what the end of the road will be. We're gonna have to improve our models. A lot of the questions you brought up today need to be answered. If you have more questions uh that you believe that need to be answered, please send them to Julia and she'll send them off to the C A A. We're gonna have to gather a lot of these questions before we have our first formal meeting with um. Uh member town officials and and other people in the member towns. And uh so that's the end of my of this segment, except for I just wanted to give an an extra shout-out to the administration and the members. Who created these models uh in a timeframe that I didn't think they'd be able to do. And uh it changed some opinions of the C A A from maybe to uh, yes, we should pursue this. Uh, so the models have a long way to go before they're rock solid. But uh it was really eye-opening, the the amount of progress they made on them. And I'm I'm pretty confident that even if the numbers aren't exactly right, the direction that they're showing is correct. And it's a positive direction for moving. If we can find the right, the right match for us. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Stulen and Mr. Luda. I do just want to um just more specifically thank Mr. Eikonen. Mr. Camerata, Ms. Andrade and um Mr. Uh Mr. Mahoney. Um, because it was their their work, their time and energy that they put into making this happen. And I just wanna acknowledge that and to uh be really thankful and and um I know we have a lot more to do. Um, and I just feel very fortunate to to have the team that I have um that is so um. So intelligent um and um so expedient in their way of of doing this because it is complicated. It is very complicated. So I just wanna acknowledge the staff and thank them very much um for their hard work.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Dawson. So now we have the finance report and that's, that's me and Mr. Eikonen. So uh the finance committee did meet last week. Uh in addition to uh looking at the model that was presented under the C A A report. Uh, we did review the uh items that Mr. Eikonen will be talking about uh in 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 a couple minutes. Uh, but uh more importantly, uh the finance subcommittee did. Uh, look at the superintendent's kind of first draft, I will say, of of the F Y twenty-four budget. These numbers are getting too big for me. I used to remember when they were F Y eighty-five budgets. Uh, but any rate, um initially back in November, uh we had uh seen the first iteration of the budget. Which was really kind of the 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 staff requests. And the uh the initial budget was up about nine point three percent. And assessments would have been up about roughly twenty percent. Uh, the superintendent has reviewed uh reviewed those numbers. Her first kind of uh run through the budget has brought the budget increase down to five point nine nine. And uh the assessments to about an increase of fifteen percent, eliminating a a few uh new positions. So uh uh our our hope is uh we we'll continue to scrub the numbers. We'd really like to get the the budget down. At least five percent or under. Uh, we are meeting again on January ninth, I believe. And uh hopefully, we're very close to a final, final document, if not a a a a final document at that point. Um, so as as every year budgets, you know, the budget is a fluid process. So it's uh keeps changing and sometimes even changes at at the very end. So any rate, that's kind of where we're at.
Mr. Luda, could I just make a, make a quick um comment? That the positions that are being c- cut are not existing positions. These were asks, right, of a.
Thought I said new positions, but maybe I didn't.
Yeah, I just wanna be very clear that we're not cutting any existing positions. It's of the new positions being asked. I just wanna say we're not able to honor all of of that. But I think it's really important to note that as we're are working on this budget, that our priority, right? Is teaching and learning. And what is it that our um teachers need to be able to do that um successfully? And so that's always at the forefront of our thinking as we're looking through and and making these cuts. So I just wanna. I'd um just wanted to reiterate that we're not cutting existing positions. And then I think, Ms. Andrade, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
I knew there was a ninth in there. Been too close to Christmas, Nikki. Okay, um, the next item uh under finance is the field rental update. And I know the uh, I know the members of the school committee were anxious to see how we're doing on field rentals, so I will turn that over to Mr. Eikonen.
Thank you, Mr. Ladue. Um, in in your packet, uh you will see a breakdown of the facilities for F Y twenty-two school year. As well as the F Y twenty-three year-to-date information. Uh, you can see that each year is broken down by the revenue that was brought in, as well as the total expenses incurred based on these rentals. It also is broken out by the different areas, something that the school committee asked for um in each uh for uh based on the revenue and uh of each area. Um, I just wanna make a note that uh there are additional ex- general expenses attributed to facilities. Which you will see in the revolving pages in in the packet. And these are are expenses that refer to those that di- that the district incurs for maintenance needed at the Tremont Building and the uh Mill Street Properties. Um, just wanna, you know, bring it to attention that the fields are far surpass. Uh, most of the other things at this point, with the exception of maybe the shop classrooms for F Y twenty-two. With regards to um Summers Edge Day Camp that was here for a number of years, uh they are no longer here. So we won't see that large of a um a uh single revenue stream coming in in the future. And I also wanna draw our attention to the F Y twenty-three. You'll see that uh the fields again um. Far surpass any of the other uh other areas in the building uh for 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 rentals. And that's primarily because of the Leslie University and Boston Bolt's football clubs uh and their fall seasons. Um, and some of that is gonna be uh recognized more as we uh get the projected revenues. Uh invoiced and 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 received um from those uh those different organizations.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Eikonen? Jeff?
My question is, and you may not be able to answer this at this time. But is the revenues from the fields living up to what our expectation was? And are the rentals from the other things that we can rent um? Come back to where they should be since the, since, you know, COVID shut everything down.
I'm gonna have to do some more informa- uh some more research on 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 the former question, Mr. Stulen. Cause I was not part of that uh preliminary discussions. It was prior to me coming on board. Um. I would hesitate to even guess at this point um regarding that. The secondly, we have had numerous inquiries about the facilities. Specifically internally, um I met with a group uh that is. Today, in fact, that wants to enter into another long-term agreement with us. That uh that could be very um beneficial for both parties. Uh, we, I I'm going to put some some numbers together and share it with Dr. Dawson. Uh, probably by the end of the week, so I can share with them this this group, uh what the projected would be for a five-month lease. Of Sundays. Uh. So, so I foresee this being. A a uh more prevalent going forward. So yes, I I do think that we will see a lot more uh interest. The fields are a different um. Concern, and I say that only not as a a negative, but as we enter into uh potential. Uh, uh, long-term with um. Uh. Agreements with specifically like the Boston Bolts, who are wanna utilize our fields on on our, on a basically year-round. Uh, uh basis. And as you can see that, I mean, they're they're willing to uh, you know. Pay the, pay the going rate and so forth. So it is, it is a decent uh amount of 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 money that will be taken in. Um, but having long-term or partnerships like this limits our ability to. Um. Specifically after we take into consideration our needs. So, yeah, while we wanna make sure that we offer it to every, you know, as many possible different uh groups. Um. And I'm seeming like I'm rambling here. I apologize. It's just trying to put this in in a way that that doesn't sound like we're we're limiting our. Our opportunities, but also maximizing our return.
Oh, I appreciate the way you're putting it because our needs are number one by a long shot. It's us. Our students, number one, period. Question is always, uh, we kind of made. Statements to our member towns about the, you know, the um, the revenue coming in from the fields. And I wanna make sure that over time, if possible, that we fulfill the expectations of that. But never at the expense of our students. So I appreciate your difficulty in trying to separate the two issues. You can say it as clearly as you want to, that the needs of our students come first, number one, and and the consideration of revenues. Is not considered before that, and that'd be fine. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, Mr. Stulen. And we're also, I'm also writing an R F P um for um. Regarding the fields as well that we'll talk more about in the future.
Okay. Right, and and Jeff, we're, the finance committee is also very interested in the revenues. And cause I, you know, I know we we did some calculations of 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 field revenues when we were talking about, you know, expand. Or doing the field project. So, you know, definitely have to stay on top of it as well. Any other questions to Mr. Eikonen on this? Uh, Alice?
Um, I'm just taking into consideration, if we expand the school, there's a a bigger slice of. The fields that goes to the Minuteman kids. So we have to consider that too.
Right, exactly. Okay, anybody else? Uh, we do have a bill from uh prior year, last fiscal year from uh Learn Well. Uh, and Mr. Eikon can address that.
Thank you, Gemma Saladue. In uh recently, our special education department received uh invoices for. Uh, student or students who are receiving medical care, medical care in hos- in a hospital. And we uh, these uh students receive this tutoring through the Learn Well, which is a uh a contracted service. So we are asking the committee to approve these prior year expenses.
And finance committee did review and recommend approval.
So moved.
One second. Need a second? No second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Uh, I'm in favor.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica, Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulen need him, yes.
Alice DeLucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. We now need a motion to enter into executive session and not to return to open session for the following reasons. One, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel. Or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with union personnel. And two, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty A three. To discuss strategy with respect to likely litigation with the town of Lincoln regarding permit fees. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And three, to conduct strategy session in preparation for a memorandum of understanding with the Boston Veterinary Clinic. And before I ask the motion, Dr. Dawson, any other people beside you and uh Julia that are gonna remain in the executive session?
Um, no, I think it's just us.
Okay, so those two should be included in the motion as well, including Dr. Dawson and Julia.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay, this requires a roll call votes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica, Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue conquered, yes.
Trudy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulen need him, yes.
Alice DeLucas Joe, yes.
Okay, it is passed and uh we will sign off from here and and uh Julia has sent a new link for the executive session, so.
And thanks to everybody that sat through the meeting with us. We appreciate your uh interest and uh please uh contact us with any questions.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm just gonna, um. Steven, I can, Pam just joined, so I'm gonna let her know that we're.
Okay.
Down here and letting uh moving into executive.
All right. See you in.
Great, cool, thank you.
Thank you.